Good evening. I would like to call the order of the Kaiser City Council. It is Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019, and ask our city recorder to please call roll.
Councilor Herrera.
He is excused.
Councilor Parsons.
Here.
Councilor Smith.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Council President Freeman.
Here.
Councilor Reed.
Here.
And Councilor Kohler.
Here.
All right. Thank you. Would you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see you all this evening. I trust that the Monday didn't throw everybody off. We'll have a short week. All right. So we have one change in our agenda tonight, and you know what? I think we will start off with that change, and that is the oath of office for Kaiser Police Officers. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief? Or on the bottom, flip the switch.
Yeah, turn it over.
Jorge Brandon, why don't you stand up real quick? This is Jorge. He's a veteran officer who got in from Woodburn, stolen from Woodburn. We love him. We love him more. This is his final destination. He came to us a couple of years ago as a reserve officer, and he said he needed to be a real cop. And he went that route, made his way back here. We're glad to have him back. Bradley Hands, back in the back. He comes from a long line of police officers, his father-in-law and others there in the audience. You guys come forward and get sworn in.
Will you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? Aye, stating.
Aye, Jorge Brandon.
Aye, Brandon. Salmo and Flair.
Steve Salmo and Flair.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The laws and ordinances.
The laws and ordinances.
Of the city of Kaiser.
Of the city of Kaiser.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office to which I am appointed.
Of the office to which I am appointed.
And employ the city of Kaiser.
And employ the city of Kaiser.
The best of my abilities.
The best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Well, it's truly an honor to say welcome and thank you to these new officers and the many family members that support them, as we can see right now that they are well-supported and well-loved. But we all know that public service is a family obligation and a family commitment. So thank you all, and we wish you a very long and successful career of providing public safety for the people of Kaiser. Thank you. It is now my pleasure to ask up Ruby Panalone. If you want to come up here, I'm going to do our annual proclamation for Constitution Week. As we just heard, our officers just took an oath of office to support and defend the Constitution of the United States, something that we all have done. And as, you know, citizens of this country, this is the document that means so much that has laid the groundwork for us to be able to do business here tonight. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America embodies the foundational principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document upon its memorable anniversary and to honor the patriotic celebration that will commemorate it, and whereas public law 200... blah, 2, I don't think so, 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Kathy Clark, Mayor of the City of Kaiser, together with the Kaiser City Council assembled in regular session, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through the 23rd, 2019, as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by being vigilant in protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and call this cause the Seal of the City of Kaiser to be here affixed on this third day of September, 2019. Ruby, you're with a very distinguished organization.
I am. I'm a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and actually, one of my patriots donated a horse to the cause of the revolution. So that's kind of noteworthy. And I want to thank you, Mayor Clark, and the council for having me again to kind of let people know that we still need to go by the American Constitution. Actually, I had the privilege of voting for Kaiser to become a city. So I've been here a while. So the DAR was founded in 1890, and it's headquartered in Washington, DC. It's a nonprofit, non-political volunteer women's service organization dedicated to promoting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing America's future through better education for our children. DAR members volunteer millions of service hours annually in their local communities, including supporting active-duty military personnel and assisting veteran patients, awarding thousands of dollars in scholarships and financial aid each year to students, and supporting schools for underserved children with annual donations exceeding $1 million. One of the schools that we support is Tamawa Indian School. As one of the most inclusive genealogical society in the country, DAR boasts 185,000 members and 3,000 chapters across the United States and internationally. Any woman 18 years of age or older, regardless of race, religion, or ethnic background, who can prove little dissent from Patriot of the American Revolution is eligible for membership. The National Society is led by a President General and an Executive Committee of 11 National Officers. In addition to rulings by the Executive Committee, the policy for the society is made by the National Board of Management, a body composed of the executive officers, 20 Vice President Generals, and 53 state regents. The National Board of Management meets six times a year at DAR headquarters in Washington, DC. Most of the DAR's volunteer work is accomplished under a committee system, and one of those committees is the Constitution Committee. The Constitution is a very important document, and we must be aware of our legal system. We do not want the people running for office to do what they want. We must be sure they are doing what the voters want. And I really thank you for letting me come today.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Ms. Panalone? I would like to come up and give you this proclamation for you and to share with all the members of your organization, and thank you all for your service to our country.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, is there anyone here from the Kaiser Community Library? Come on up to the table. I'm so glad you're here. And one of our key freedoms is to be able to express ourselves through writing and reading, and the Kaiser Community Library is a very important part of our community to help us with literacy and providing opportunities for people of all ages to enjoy reading and coming together for knowledge. So we thank you so much. I'm going to read the proclamation, and if you have something to share about the Kaiser Community Library, we'd love to hear all the great stuff going on. Whereas a library card is one of the most important school supplies, and whereas signing up for a library card is the first step towards academic achievement and lifelong learning, and whereas libraries play an important role in the education and development of children, and whereas library programs serve students of all ages from early literacy to homework help to GED classes, and whereas librarians lead the way in creating inclusive spaces and developing diverse collections for children and people of all backgrounds to connect and learn together, and whereas libraries bridge the digital divide by providing a range of information and services to children and adult learners, and whereas libraries continue to transform and expand their services in ways that meet the needs of the communities they serve, and whereas libraries open a world of infinite possibilities through resources and services to help people pursue their passions and give students the tools to succeed in school and beyond. Now therefore, I, Kathy Clark, Mayor of the City of Kaiser, with the Kaiser City Council assembled in regular session, do hereby proclaim September, 2019, as the Library Card Sign-Up Month, and encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card today. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the Seal of the City of Kaiser this third day of September, 2019. Would you please introduce yourself and talk about our wonderful community library?
I will. My name is... Do I need to press?
It's on.
Okay. My name is Vicky Brameyer. I'm the manager of Kaiser Community Library. It's the best deal going. It's a library card is $10 a year for the entire family. We have books, movies, internet access computers for kids from 1 to 92, and the entire family is welcome. It's right next door in the Kaiser Cultural Center. So September is a good time to remember to come in and sign up for a library card.
Excellent. And you also have a great partnership with the Shemekah... I'm not a member of CCRS, but all Kaiser residents are, and all I have to do is get the library card that way as well. So we're really lucky in our community. We have such great libraries close at hand for us to enjoy.
Yes, we are.
And you have a large number of volunteers. Do you know how many?
We do. We are all volunteer. So there are, I think, about 70 volunteers who staff the circulation desk, our book sales, on the library board. All volunteer.
70 volunteers, keeping our community library open and part of our great Kaiser Cultural Center. Thank you so much. Any questions for Vicky? I'm going to come around and make this presentation, and please tell all the volunteers thank you so much for making Kaiser Community Library possible.
We'll do that. Thank you.
And of course, everybody's got to remember to watch for the October book sale. You need some good new reads for the winter? That's the place to get them. Great deal. So that's what I have for special orders of business. Before we go to committee reports, I would like to circle back and introduce Mr. Chris Walford, who is our youth counselor for this year. I'll give you an opportunity to introduce yourself later on in the program, if you would, in the agenda. But I just wanted to acknowledge that you're here, and we're very happy to have you on board for this school year. Thank you. So later on in the agenda, we'll give you a chance to weigh in, and if you have something to share about what's going on in McNary or with young people in the community, we want to hear about it. All right. Thank you. Welcome, Chris. Well, it's the first week of school. We're getting into September. Lots of things are starting up again. So speaking of starting up and volunteers, let's look at the report. Item 5A, the Volunteer Coordinating Committee Recommendations for Appointment to the Kaiser Public Arts Commission. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Volunteer Coordinating Committee met on August 15th, 2019 to review applications and interview candidates for openings on the Kaiser Public Arts Commission. The committee is recommending Andrea Madison for position number two on the Kaiser Public Arts Commission, filling the remainder of a term expiring June 30th, 2020. It is recommend city council accept this recommendation of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee and appoint the above stated applicant as presented. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Council President Freeman.
I move that the Kaiser City Council accept the recommendation from the Volunteer Coordinating Committee appointing Andrea Madison for position number two on the Kaiser Public Arts Commission, term expiring June 30, 2020.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the recommendation and appoint of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee and appoint Andrea Madison to position number two on the Kaiser Public Arts Commission, filling the remainder of the term expiring June 30, 2020. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us then to item 8B, which is the Volunteer Coordinating Committee Recommendations for Appointment to the Charter Review Committee. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Volunteer Coordinating Committee met on June 20th, 2019, and August 15th, 2019 to review applications and interview candidates for openings on the Charter Review Committee. The committee is recommending the following applicants for appointment. Broderick Pack, Pat Fisher, Rick Keun, Kathy Lincoln, Shannon Flowers, Zaira Marin Flores, and Gary Whalen. The committee members also consist of two Kaiser City Councilors to be appointed by the mayor and announced at a regularly scheduled council meeting. It is recommend the mayor make an announcement of the two Kaiser City Councilors, and if the council feels that is appropriate, by minute motion, accept the recommendations of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee and appoint the applicants as outlined above. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. The appointees from the Kaiser City Council to the Kaiser...
To that, yes.
Reverse start over. The two Kaiser City Councilors who are going to be appointed to the Charter Review Committee are Council President Kim Freeman and Councilor Elizabeth Smith. With that, Council President Freeman, the motion?
So do I make it to the recommendation of the volunteers or the minute motion that includes everyone?
Everyone.
Everyone. Okay.
All of the above. Is that correct, Mr. Johnson?
Since the council's really only appointed 5, it'd be as the Volunteer Coordinating Committee.
Okay. Okay. So I move that the Kaiser City Council... Wow, I think it's like contagious this is. Sorry, guys. My fault. I'm in...
I'm through.
Okay. How about the Kaiser City Council... I move that the Kaiser City Council approve the following applicants for appointments to the Charter Review Committee. Broderick Pack, Pat Fisher, Rick Keun, Kathy Lincoln, Shannon Flowers, Zaira Marin Flores, and Gary Whalen. Second? It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council accept the recommendation from the Volunteer Coordinating Committee and appoint to the Charter Review Committee Broderick Pack, Pat Fisher, Rick Keun, Kathy Lincoln, Shannon Flowers, Zaira Marin Flores, and Gary Whalen. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That takes us then to item 6, which is public testimony. This time is provided for citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for public hearing. We have no public hearings scheduled for this evening, however, we have... Actually, only one person signed up to speak. Jonathan, would you be okay waiting until the start of item 8B? Thank you. For yours, okay. Thank you very much. So with that... I'm done with that. Carol Dourfler, come on down. Good to see you.
Yes, thank you. It's good to see you all again. So much for summer. Bye-bye. Good evening, Mayor Clark, city councilors and staff. I come in peace. I have come to thank you all for your hard, hard work, especially Mr. Johnson and Mayor Clark, with the shooting incidents that had occurred in the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association, with the bullets flying not over Broadway but over West Kaiser. So it's been a long two years. Rhonda and I have been to many, many meetings. Mr. Johnson, Mayor Clark have been to many, many meetings, and I just wanted to come and thank you all. I know it was time-consuming, but it was just needed to be done. The outcome isn't quite what we wanted. We would like to have not had any gunfire over across the river, but I think it's the best it can be, and we just thank you very much from the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association.
Thank you very much, Carol.
You're welcome.
Shannon, Johnson, and Chris Epley were tirelessly on this...
Chris, I didn't mean to slight you.
It's okay. Thanks.
It took a great deal of time, and people have been very patient, recognizing that some things went to the back burner while pursuing a successful conclusion to the legal matters and, most importantly, for the safety of the people in our community. This is something we would have done for any citizen, any residents in our community, to make sure that we work as tirelessly as we can to ensure public safety. But I want to commend you and Rhonda and all the members of the West Kaiser Neighborhood Association for your hard work. I heard from numerous occasions how very articulately and very well you went and presented your case in Polk County and other places. You were well-heard, well-respected, and I thought you represented West Kaiser and the people of Kaiser very well. So I want to thank you for that.
Well, thank you. I'll tell Rhonda. Thank you so much.
Any questions, comments? Glad to have that in the room.
We're glad it's over, too.
Yes.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Carol. Anybody else who would like to speak during public testimony this evening? All right. Let's go on to administrative action. The first item is item 8A, park host Buchanan House at Kaiser Rapids Park. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor, and councilors. Earlier in the year, the city council had indicated that you would prefer to have a volunteer park host position at the Buchanan House. That's the White House down not far from the amphitheater. At that time, we indicated that we needed to review the matter to see if there were any particular legal hurdles and kind of how the format of that would work, and we requested our labor attorney Kathy Peck to take a look at the issue. As I'd indicated previously, Ms. Peck said that there were some issues there and there would be some risk. I won't go into all of them right here, but basically it's BOLI, or the Bureau of Labor and Industries, issues, also some Fair Labor Standard Practices Act at the federal level that would cause some concerns for claims that a volunteer, even a well-meaning volunteer, couldn't necessarily waive. So the situation, or the feared situation would be have a volunteer in good faith wants to move in there, do the job, and for whatever reason it doesn't work out, and things turn bad, that that person could make claims against the city regardless of how they felt at the beginning, and the city could be liable for those claims, and for the most part, those would be uninsured kind of claims. So with that in mind, staff recommended that we not go that route and instead rent the house out and be able to use that rental revenue for park operations. The city manager is looking into the issues that brought this to the fore at the beginning. That's the eyes and ears on the park issue in terms of security, and staff will be continuing to look at that in a different kind of format other than a park host living in the house. So the question before you tonight is to, via minute motion, determine that you want to rent the house at fair market value. Again, remembering that to do so, we would also initiate a parks system master plan amendment. Bill Lawyer wasn't able to make it tonight, but he reminded me, because I'd forgotten about this, that we are planning to do a full parks master plan update in the next fiscal year. And so the anticipation is that it would make sense to just have that as part of that plan and do it all at once. And considering that it's a fairly short term, you know, lawyers think of months as short term, so the... My recommendation would be, you can see I laid out the proposed motion for you there in the staff report, and then with the knowledge that we would be taking that up next year, Bill plans on working on that towards the end of this fiscal year, in other words, next spring, so we would be good to go at the very beginning of next fiscal year with the parks master plan and have a request for proposals and that whole thing going out then. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Are there any questions on the staff report? Council Kohler.
So does that mean that if we were to pass this like it is, that we could go ahead and rent the place next week if we had opportunity?
Yeah, next week might be a little fast, but yes, the staff would anticipate moving fairly quickly to get a renter in there for not only the rental revenues but also have it occupied. That would be our plan.
Council Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to point out that we took this under very serious consideration. Several months back, we had testimony from many of our citizens, particularly the West Kaiser citizens, and we put together a proposal that we thought was going to benefit everybody, and our city manager and city attorney have spent many, many hours working on this issue, and we have had a work session on this. This is not something that we have taken lightly, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of the breadth of work that went into exploring this option.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You reminded me of that. I didn't put it in my staff report, and I can't remember all the other options that we looked at, but Chris and Bill and I looked at several other options, discussed it with our labor attorney, such as having a regular park employee in that position. Budget-wise, it just didn't work out. There's a couple other options that Chris and I tried to work out for either financial reasons or legal reasons, because we would like the idea too if we didn't have the downside, and we just felt the downside was too much to handle, so.
If I can sort of iterate on one of those. We kept wondering, so if state parks can do it, you know, why can't we? And turns out, state parks actually have a specific exemption from BOLI for campground hosts. It's not park hosts, it's campground hosts specifically, and that's why you see volunteer hosts in their campgrounds. And then we started wondering, well, how can we identify Kaiser Rapids as a campground? And we couldn't. So we looked at that, and actually, we went back and researched some of the discussion occurring when we created the park, and we thought about having campground activity down there, and it was specifically identified as something the community didn't want. So though we have had camping events like for the Eclipse and the Boy Scouts once here, you can't declare it a campground because of those couple of events. It has to be an actual designated campground to get that exemption. Even at that, we'd have to pursue a change to the state law and get us identified as a campground that meets that exemption under BOLI as well. So anyway, we looked at it a lot of different ways, and we just couldn't make it work. So even with our previous host, we eventually moved that over to a pure rental agreement for some of these reasons as well, so toward the end of it.
That was one of those things that when we established the park, we did what we thought was in the best interest of the community and the park and so forth, and lessons learned along the way, but a lot of thought was put into it. And so we did ask the question, well, there is a campsite. Yes, it is. It is boat-in, and that is very, very specific, and that does not make the entire Kaiser Rapids Park a campground. So that was a nuance that wasn't going to give us that entree there either. So we did ask the question. Any further questions on the staff report? Any further questions on the staff report? Okay. Counselor President Freeman.
I move that the Kaiser City Council direct staff to rent the Buchanan House at fair market rent and to initiate a parks' system master plan amendment to delete the caretaker house designation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council moved direct staff to rent the Buchanan House at a fair market rent and to initiate a parks' system master plan amendment to delete the caretaker house designation. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. One absent. Okay, item 8B, which is an ordinance regulating the maintenance, reconstruction, alteration, and repair of sidewalks, repealing ordinance number 2016-758 and ordinance relating to street obstructions and debris on public right-of-way, repealing ordinance number 2008-578. City manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and counsel. Following the council work session on this matter, council directed staff to revise the sidewalk ordinance to prohibit any obstructions on the sidewalk. In addition, council directed staff to revise the street obstruction ordinance to restrict basketball hoops or basketball standards in certain locations and times. So we've revised both ordinances and we've attached both the red line version and clean versions to pack it for your convenience. Basically, the sidewalk ordinance is pretty straightforward. Virtually all obstructions are prohibited. The only exception would be lawfully parked recreational vehicles with a three-quarter inch utility hookup, which is, you know, pretty small. So we felt that that was appropriate. I think that's what was discussed at the work session. So the sidewalk part, I think, is pretty straightforward. With regard to the street obstruction ordinance, it essentially says there are no obstructions in the street other than lawfully parked vehicles and basketball standards if in active use or in active use. Or even if in active use, I added between, for your discussion purposes, between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM to have a solid timeframe if anybody wanted to argue about whether it's active use or not. That was the direction we got from council, at least that I saw from the minutes. And I know that at the end of the work session, there was some question about active use or not. So hopefully, we got the impression that you folks wanted there. I also, on my own, decided to add reflectors and reflective tapes after meeting with community development staff and code enforcement officer. An issue that I didn't know about is, you know, part of the reason the issue comes up is the safety of the kids, but also vehicles at night. You know, I mean, even trailers usually have a reflector on them. And we have had complaints, especially, you know, in the dead of winter, when a lot of people, you know, play basketball, because that's when the season is. You have UPS drivers, in particular FedEx drivers, saying, hey, I don't, you know, they've either run into them or nearly run into them. So I thought that would be an appropriate add to that. There are two separate ordinances. And so if you want to pass one tonight and not pass the other, that's certainly fine. I think the sidewalk one is pretty straightforward. I think we have some people who want to talk about the issue with the street obstruction ordinance or the basketball hoop issues. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? So at issue tonight, as Mr. Johnson said, are two separate things. One is access to sidewalks for the use of people to be able to walk from place to place. The discussion here tonight is about people being able to use public spaces. It is not anti-kid, anti-disabled, anti, you know, blue cheese, anti, you know, green grass. This is about specifically about how we are going to share our public spaces, both physically over, you know, trying to occupy the same space at the same time and then over time. So that's really the focus of this conversation. This has come up time and time and time again. In my time on council, this is not the first rodeo here. But it is something that I'm glad that we were able, we're going to have this conversation about, you know, what are sidewalks for? How are we going to share them safely? And the streets, and how are we going to share those spaces as well? I appreciate Mr. Johnson saying we can address these separately. And I would anticipate that we will address these two ordinances individually and work through them as individual motions, not together. Any questions thus far? Okay, with that said, Mr. Thompson, why don't you come on down and lead off? While he comes down, we do have some emails that we have received from Danielle Bethel, from Jonathan Thompson, from Jeff Cowan on this issue. The time is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jonathan Thompson and I'm here tonight as a Kaiser dad. I emailed all of you when I first saw a draft of this ordinance Wednesday evening. So I won't repeat the entire email here for the sake of all of our time. But in short, I am opposed to the ordinance as it's written dealing with basketball hoops. I'm not without empathy for the need to share the sidewalks, but I also think that this deserves a much larger conversation that's been had. I appreciate the mayor's comments that this has been discussed multiple times. It's the first time I'm hearing it, so it might be that I had just had my head under a rock. But I think this needs a much more, a much larger conversation. First, when these basketball standards are filled with sand and water, they're not portable. And if they're not filled with sand or water, I would challenge one of you to come help me move mine, because it's very, very heavy. So, and especially couldn't be moved by a kid. We, I mean, we should want our kids outside, turning off the video games, putting down the iPhones and doing something active. And the parks and the schools are not always an option. The closest park to my house is across a busy street and there is no basketball court there. And the closest school is across two busy streets and the basketball court is tucked in behind, which is probably not the safest place for a kid to be, especially by herself. So when I look at the proposed ordinance, I like the fact that it's complaint-driven. That's good. I mean, I don't think that we want code enforcement or the Kaiser police driving around ticketing basketball hoops that are simply sitting there. So I like the fact that it's complaint-driven. But I would challenge us to find a way, a kind of, I call it a safe harbor, for lack of a better word, that, you know, if you do A, B, and C, you can have a basketball hoop in front of your house. And it may be as simple as attaching it to the sidewalk. If the standard blocking the sidewalk is an issue, let's see what we can do about attaching them to the sidewalks. And instead of having, you know, three or four feet of basketball standard, you may have eight inches or 12 inches. And obviously, if a hoop is abandoned, falling apart, in obvious disrepair, cannot be used, that's a much different conversation than hoops that are being maintained. In our case, our neighbor, our neighbor next to us and us, we went in on it together. It was kind of a neat little neighborhood project we did. He and I, we both had kids that were, well, he had, we still have, kids who play basketball. And we put it together, it was families, and we had a great time doing it. So I would just advise us to take a much slower approach to this. I was reminded in a conversation with the mayor earlier this week that when we did things like the parks and police fees that impacted a lot of Kaiser residents, we took our time and we had a lot of discussion. We took into account a lot of different viewpoints. And I would just encourage us to do that with this as well. There's a solution here. I'm sure there is. I'm sure there's a solution here that allows kids to play basketball and other people to use the sidewalks when they need to. And I would challenge us to find it. So that's my ask, is that we find a way to make this work for everybody. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you for coming here. You did send an email earlier this week. And we're hearing a lot of opinions on Facebook and so forth. And I just really appreciate that you came tonight to make yourself part of the conversation. So thank you. My question, and as I'm thinking about this issue, is what would you consider active use? I know this is putting you on the spot a little bit, but what would you consider active use? What would be a fair interpretation of that term? As somebody who has one and uses it.
Madam Mayor, Counselor Reed, just off the top of my head, used in the last 15 days? I don't know. I mean, in the summertime, ours can be used almost every day. But in the wintertime, when it's pouring down rain, we may have 15 days where it doesn't get used. So I would say, you know, 15 days would be just, but that's purely off the top of my head. I have put zero thought, other than the time it took you to ask that question, into that answer.
Well, fair enough. And definitely, you know, seasons would play into that a great deal as well. So thank you for hazarding that answer.
Thank you.
Any, okay, Counselor Parsons?
Thank you. So Jonathan, when you talk about putting, attaching it to the sidewalk, tell us a little bit what you mean by that. You're talking about removing the bottom part and what?
Right. Well, I mean, there are basketball hoops that instead of having a sand or water-filled base, are attached to concrete or pavement. And so it's a plate, but ones that I've seen are a plate. And the pole, the plate is bolted to whatever hard surface there is and the pole comes straight off of that. So it's a much smaller footprint than the ones that I've seen. So that's kind of what I was thinking. It wouldn't block the sidewalk nearly as much as one of these long bases would.
Okay. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In one of our discussions somewhere, we, Bill Lawyer had talked about the even drilling a hole into the concrete and mounting them at some point. And I think that may be a good alternative also.
Thank you. So thank you for the good ideas. And so if I asked a group of people to work with our traffic safety bike pit on alternatives to ensure mobility for everyone in the community, would you be willing to be a part of that conversation?
Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to.
Great. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to speak to this issue about the sidewalks or on the streets? All right. Don't all rush at once. Counselor President Freeman, are you comfortable putting the first one up for conversation?
Sure. Are we going to read the other ones that we have received? Or are we not going to put those into record?
We have some that are lengthy, but...
They don't have to be read to be put in the record.
These will be in the record.
They'll be in the record.
So just to summarize very quickly, and thank you for, that's a good point, is Jeff Cowan from the Kaiser Prairie Homeowners Association supports having, I don't want to put words in your mouth, sir, but considering code enforcement issue regarding obstructions in the public right-of-ways such as basketball hoops, and we support your proposed action to enforce keeping our public rights-of-way areas such as sidewalks and public roadways clear of all obstructions. And then from, let's see, this is the same one. I printed it off. And then from Danielle Bethel, who sends her regrets that she was not able to participate in person. She resides in the neighborhood off of Wheatland Road and has concerns that we are, we need to have some additional ideas. And let's see, I don't want to, again, this will be in the record fully online and allowing poles to be placed in sidewalks without obstructing ADA access, et cetera. So similar ideas to finding alternatives. Okay, so those will be printed in the record and anybody will be able to see them online as well. Anybody else who would like to speak to the issue? So why don't we start with the first one on sidewalks, if you're comfortable making that motion?
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance regulating the maintenance, reconstruction, alteration, and repair of sidewalks, repealing ordinance number 2016-758.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance regulating the maintenance, reconstruction, alteration, and repair of sidewalks, repealing ordinance number 2016-758. Discussion. Counselor President Freeman.
I would just like to say, in my neighborhood, I guess I'm fortunate. But I, my neighbor actually right across the street from me rolls their basketball hoop out when the children play and they roll it back in. When my daughter had one some 30 years ago, it was in our driveway. It never was on the sidewalk. It never was in the street. I walk a lot of the streets in the Kaiser neighborhood and it is really hard to walk in a lot of neighborhoods that are blocked by the basketball hoops, unfortunately. And then when you have cars parked, in most neighborhoods on both sides of the street, even as adult, it's kind of scary going out in the street when you can't walk the sidewalk and try not to go in someone's yard. I think if you're, you know, a youth or something, you probably don't want your children out in the street trying to maneuver. Or if you're someone who potentially is in a wheelchair, you've just created an additional barrier for them to try and either back up, go out in the street. I have just concerns that blocking the sidewalks is not accessible to all citizens that live in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to bring forth a point that we talked about in work session about the relationship with the code enforcement. And Bill Lawyer had assured us that Ben, our code enforcement guy, is on board with this, because right now, there's nothing that we can do. My understanding is that there's nothing that we can do if somebody says, hey, there's a basketball hoop in the way, hasn't, you know, hasn't been used for years or whatever. There's nothing, our code, nothing in our ordinances that the code enforcement guy could bring up to say, hey, this is against our city ordinances. So this is an attempt to give him a tool that he needs in order to do that job. And I have another question, but yes, finish this thought first.
So read a later to that thought. Basketball standards are only one of the issues that our code enforcement faces. There are many obstructions, including, we added it, into the commercial zone, but including furniture and debris, everything else that you can imagine. And so this is extremely important for the code enforcement person to be able to have the tool to say, you can't block the sidewalk.
Thank you. My other question is, given the kind of interesting relationship about who's responsible for sidewalks, who would be sued in an ADA sort of lawsuit for this? Would it be the homeowner? Would it be the city? Would it be both?
It likely could be both. And it kind of depends on what you ended up doing. Because if you formally allow an obstruction, you know, there's more possibility of liability on the city. If we formally prohibit it, which this ordinance does, there's not much. So the issue is what we, if we had a situation where we just totally neglected for some long-term period enforcing it, possibly, but at least we would have the law on the books to prohibit it, which we don't right now. So this is a step forward with regard to that part of it.
Okay, anybody else? You? Counselor Kohler. Counselor Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's a couple of things that keep rattling around in my little pea-brain about all this. And one is that we can't really legislate common sense. I mean, we could make up laws for all kinds of things under the sun and some people are still going to abuse them and not get along or find some way to use that to fight against their neighbor or complain. I just wish somehow we could, all be adults and figure out how to get along with each other. But sometimes that doesn't work. The other thing that bothers me a little bit is I see the kids out enjoying the basketball standards, but I also have friends that are in wheelchairs or maybe they're running strollers. So I feel very conflicted. And I wonder if we shouldn't have more discussion on it. I just wonder about that.
So to your point, and the ADA access for all people, I've got friends who are disabled veterans who need to be able to use the sidewalks, because that's their means of getting about. So this is a much larger issue than providing for one sports opportunity for kids. However, my question to Mr. Thompson was intentional in that while we want to give our code enforcement the opportunity to say, look, let's make sidewalks where you can walk on the side, not down the middle of the street. And I want to follow up with, what are our options? What can we do with the people in our community for those that are difficult to move around? I know I've got one of those big ones in my backyard. And, you know, you get two or three kids together and they can help that thing pretty good. But more to his point, though, is how do we find alternatives that we can give? And this is the Kaiser way. We're solving a problem, but we... We're solving a problem, but we don't want to solve a problem without solving the rest of the problem, which is basketball is a popular sport. We want kids outside. What alternatives do we offer in that space? And I think we have an opportunity to have that discussion. But keeping the sidewalks for walking on the side is going to be important for people of all abilities. And to me, this is very, very important, that we give our code enforcement a little more oomph for the people. Like you said, it's the small percentage that go, do I really have to keep that open for people? Yeah, actually, that's important. So that's my thinking here. Councilor Kohler, I'll let you finish your thought and then Councilor Reed, come back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's also a lot of mailboxes and such in the middle of sidewalks. There's several of them in my neighborhood. If I want to run a wheelchair down my, around my neighborhood, there is no way that I could do that because of all the mailboxes. We have one basketball standard, which is moved frequently, but it's, I know that if I went to that neighbor and said, you know what, we have an option to put that on the street or we need to move it somewhere else, he'd go, no problem, okay. But the mailboxes, I'm not going to move those. What do we do with that?
So that's a great question that I think we need to address. Probably won't be addressed here tonight. I can see Nate is starting to circulate some thoughts there. Would you like to weigh in on that, sir? Because that was a fair question.
Yes. And our current standards require widened sidewalks in a new subdivision where there is the mailbox placement. When the postal service changed the standard and placed those grouped sidewalks, sometimes they do encroach. Now, the encroachment still meets ADA requirements. If not, then they would be required to place a widened apron on that sidewalk. And maybe a widened apron might be a part of the solution that we're talking about with the kinds of things that Jonathan was referring to. I don't know. So just because you see one example of something in the world that's wrong doesn't mean that the world is wrong.
Just means we need to fix it. It's another opportunity to fix it and make it work better, in my humble opinion. This is why I am supportive of making sure sidewalks are passable. My daughter and I go walking. I have a dog that needs to be walked three times a day. And there are places in my neighborhood that are not passable, either because of vegetation. And every once in a while, Ben gets a little thing. Now that we can report them online, and people are wondering where you do that, I happen to have that website right here. It's on our city website, kaiser.org/code-enforcement-complaint-form. Click on that and put in the description of what you see is going on. And why that's important, one, again, we have one Ben and we have 39,000 people. So this is more efficient. Two, it creates a record. And when he gets multiple complaints about a particular item, he's not responding all those many times to it, they group up and he knows that he can address that once and take care of the various notices that came in. So it's a great tool where we can collectively make sure that Ben and our police, especially with vehicles, know what's going on and can respond appropriately. The first line is always education. And the compliance rate is really, really high on that first contact. Most people are going, okay. Like my neighbor, when he was contacted about vegetation that had grown three quarters away across the sidewalk, his wife said, thank you, I've been telling him for a month, he had to clean that up. And he got on it. So there is that part. Further discussion? Councilor Reed, thank you for reminding me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess this whole thing, the part that I have the most difficulty with is the Section 1 E1 that says, standards shall be removed when not in active use. Whether in active use or not, standards shall be removed between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM the next day. Because this is meant to be complaint-based and not, I guess, I'm gonna say restrictive, I don't know if that's what I mean, I would just be much more comfortable leaving that, standards shall be removed when not in active use, and leave that active use up for interpretation rather than specifying the hours. Because those hours, it just seems like we're setting ourselves up for a lot more enforcement than we're really bargaining for.
Okay.
So that would be my recommendation, is just to take out that part of E1.
Okay. So that is on Section E, Sub 1, that's on the bottom of Page 5. Are you suggesting that as a friendly amendment?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I believe there's a motion on the floor for the sidewalk ordinance.
Right. Oh, is that the other one?
This ordinance is the street obstruction ordinance.
Okay.
So
Thank you.
If, discretion of counsel, if you want to move forward with the motion that's on the floor now, unless there's more questions on the sidewalk ordinance, then you can turn to the next one.
So this is street obstruction?
The one you're voting on right now is just the sidewalk ordinance. The basketball hoops are in the street obstruction ordinance.
Okay.
Which is not the motion right now. It's just the sidewalk ordinance, so.
Okay. So, yeah, we only moved the first one.
Yeah. So the basketball standards are not on both?
They're, this should be addressed differently.
Yes. I'm sorry. Councilor Reed, you're correct. The basketball hoops under the sidewalk ordinance just are prohibited on the sidewalk. If council wants to move forward with the sidewalk ordinance tonight and after more discussion at a later date, it turns out you want to change that, you can. Or you can choose not to pass either one of them tonight, whatever you choose. The side, you know, this issue originally came up, as I recall, with regard to blocking the sidewalk. That was the main issue, but it kind of morphed into this broader discussion, which was appropriate with regard to, well, where are you going to put the basketball hoops? So you certainly, it's your discretion on how you want to deal with it. You can choose to pass the sidewalk ordinance, which is a motion on the floor now. And later, if you feel like you want to make some small allowance, which is, I think, what Jonathan was indicating, I would, I will say, we would have to look at that pretty closely with regard to ADA requirements. But you can certainly do that and make that fix, if you will, later. Or you can just wait if you don't want to pass the sidewalk ordinance tonight. But the motion on the floor right now is to pass the sidewalk ordinance.
So if we can press pause on what you were mentioning on E1, which is the second ordinance, we will have a discussion on here in a few minutes.
Okay. So just...
We don't have that active?
Yeah. The time, if I may, Madam Mayor, the time limits were only with regard to the street obstruction ordinance.
Okay. So basically, may I?
Yes, please.
Okay. Just so I'm clear in my head. So basically, the sidewalk ordinance is absolutely no basketball standards or anything. If you want to use basketball standards, put them on the street. And then the second question is, all right, well, we're going to talk about how we're going to allow them on the street. That's clarifying what we're talking about, right?
That's what we, yeah, that's how I understand it as well. Mr. Brown?
Either the street or on private property, overhanging. I can envision something overhanging the sidewalk from the property owner. So there's a lot of solutions. The sidewalk obstruction is just to say that sidewalks shall remain unobstructed from anything, regardless of whether it's junk, solid waste, vehicles, you name it.
Big frame signs.
And there's the only, yeah, signs, everything. So the sidewalk obstruction is just straightforward, simple, sidewalks shall be unobstructed. Except for the one small inclusion, if you have a legally parked, stressed legally parked RV, you can run a small, if it's protected and signed, a three-quarter inch obstruction. In other words, that much if it's protected or signed or something.
So you can roll over it safely. Yes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So would it be possible from a procedural perspective to be able to say, yes, I want to pass this, but I want to reserve the basketball discussion for another time? Or is that...
So the motion on the floor...
Does that complicate things?
Yeah. Well, it's up to council as a whole how you want to vote on it. The motion on the floor is to pass the sidewalk ordinance as presented in the packet. And that would, within 30 days, I think the effective date, outlaw any obstructions, including basketball hoops and encroach on the sidewalk at all. So after that date, that'd be the law of the land in Kaiser. And if you're concerned about that, to the degree that you think that that will interfere too much with being able to play basketball, then maybe you don't want to pass that tonight as a whole. That's up to you. You certainly can vote yes on this and indicate that you, you know, would like to revisit the issue if it looks like one of the options for basketball hoops is some sort of encroachment on the sidewalk. The impression I got from the work session was that the council didn't want to have any obstructions on the sidewalk. And so that part seemed pretty straightforward. If it turns out that the basketball hoop issue kind of revisits itself, we certainly can go back and revise the ordinance at that time. Or you can choose not to pass it tonight. It's up to you folks.
So if I may, after this discussion and so forth, is to ask our Traffic Safety Bike Ped Committee to look at alternatives with some interested people in the community that want to come back with ADA compliant recommendations. So that we can have basketball in the neighborhoods and we can also have people able to walk about. But I think that would be a good group to come up with alternatives that would comply with ADA, that would protect the homeowners, that would protect our community and make it accessible and a lot safer. So that's something I want to bring up afterwards, but it's not going to be part of this ordinance. But that's where my head's going with it. Does that complicate things? I'm looking at Mr. Brown.
I'm just trying to keep in my mind which ordinance we're talking about.
Sidewalk only. We're only talking about sidewalk right now.
Okay.
So, for example, the idea of having the plate holding a basketball standard that all mobility devices would be able to get about on the sidewalk. You know, what do those look like? You just mentioned if somebody has it on their front lawn and it reaches over just long as it's eight feet, so you don't get, you know, clunk your head on it.
An expanded apron around it.
Expanded apron. All those different options that, again, they are ADA compliant and permissive for whatever sports thing you want to put up. Maybe it's not basketball. Maybe it's something else. But again, the idea is that we have alternatives that we can give people saying, this is going to work. And this also protects the right of accessibility for all members of the community. Does that make sense? You're thinking about it? Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
No. Opposed.
Okay. Motion passes. Five yes, one no, one absent. All right. Let's go on to the street obstruction. Council President Freeman, item, the second one. Okay, I'm getting there. Hold on. Do we have a longer packet tonight? Yes. Well, it came in both redlined and unreadlined versions. Okay. Do you want that?
Yep, I've got it.
Okay.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance relating to street obstructions and debris on public right of way, repealing ordinance number 2008-578.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt a bill for an ordinance relating to street obstructions and debris on public rights of way, repealing ordinance number 2008-578. Discussion. Council Reed, now, do you want to talk about E1?
Sure.
We'll come to you first.
What I just said. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I would recommend that we adjust E1 to just read when not in active use and leave that interpretation up to code enforcement.
Is that a friendly amendment?
Yes. Oh, but I seconded it.
Well, that's okay. Does the mover accept it?
So you're line 16, right? I just want to make sure I'm following.
Line 1, wait, keep going. Sorry. So right here.
Page 45 of the packet?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So...
45 of the ordinance.
Oh. No, this is 26, or page 26. On line.
It's Section 1 E1.
Okay. Shannon, do you have that?
Yes, I did. But I kind of misunderstood the direction you folks were going. If you're going to refer this to the Traffic Safety Commission, would you want...
That's not what I'm talking about for referring, this one. Well, anyway, it's up to them.
So just make sure I was clear. You're looking at passing the street obstruction ordinance tonight?
That's what we're discussing.
And then referring what to the?
Sidewalk.
The alternatives, the ADA compliant alternatives.
Oh, I see.
To allow for
Okay.
All of the above.
Okay.
But the friendly amendment is to remove... Yeah, E1, the second sentence, standards shall be removed between the hours of 10 and 7. So just take off that sentence. Or whether or not in active use, the whole thing comes out. And it just says, standards shall be removed when not in active use. So, do you accept that? Second accepts it?
Yes.
Okay. So that's not part of the motion. It is now amended. Any further discussion on this one, the street obstruction? Council President Freeman?
So I'm not sure if this is a question for Shannon or Nate. So in thinking of Ben, and Ben came to us originally asking for help on this, and we're taking off hours. Okay. And then when not in active use, and I think, you know, we asked Jonathan what he thought active use was, and on the fly, he gave us a good answer, I think. But we all could interpret what active use means, looks like. I mean...
Yeah. My concern with that is the first time Ben attempts to enforce this, we will be coming back to you asking to define what active use looks like.
And so if I'm looking at fairness and transparency and us trying to be clear to all citizens that live in our community and to help our code enforcement and city staff, I think we need to put some, a definition or parameters around what active use is. And so I understand removing timeframes. I'm not sure if that's helpful, honestly, or not. I do worry about putting basketball hoops in the street because I think of the garbage trucks that come.
And a street sweeper.
And a street sweeper. And if you're, I mean, I live on a cul-de-sac and when you've got cars parked on both streets and you've got, it's, I don't even know how they do it sometimes. I'm amazed. They're very skilled. So I just worry about hindering other things. And I really believe we need to define active use.
And we don't have that in the definitions, do we, on this, Mr. Johnson?
No, we don't, Madam Mayor. That's really the reason I added the time limit, is to give a second. So if anybody wanted to argue, well, we think it's actively being used because we use it two, three times a week. So, well, yeah, but how do we know that? Who's going to monitor that? I mean, even if you agreed on some other change, if it's like, if you use it once a day, who's going to monitor that? So if it can be left overnight, then I think you're going to have just an enforcement problem, depending on the practical issue of somebody fighting us on it, right? Because we don't give somebody a citation right away. We're going to work with them on it. And if they work with us, that's fine. If they don't, though, and they want to fight about what active use is, then, yeah, there could be an issue.
Mr. Brown weigh in and then come to Councilor Kohler.
So the active use term actually came in having a long discussion with Ben. Much of what Ben does is basically going out and working with people. And the intent is to put something in the ordinance that says, look, folks, you know, this needs to be, if you're using it, then you can use it under these circumstances. And I know this drives Shannon crazy because he likes hours and, you know, whatever on it, because he's the one that's got to write much of this documentation. I get it. But the intent was, this wasn't intended to be a program that we're going to go out and round up basketball standards, that we were going to go out and when there is a problem and when somebody is creating a problem in the neighborhood and people can document that it has not been used for a long time. And we ask people to provide that documentation for us. And we ask... And we ask people to provide that documentation for us, and we ask, we get good compliance. Ben is exceptional in getting these kinds of compliance. And so, the reason why it was left to be more vague is to specifically say, "Look, this is not something that we're going to have a stopwatch on, we're not going to go out there, and we're not going to monitor this, but if it's a problem, then we have it in the ordinance and we will be able to go out to the homeowner and say, 'Look, this is not being actively used.'" We've got all kinds of reports from your name, whatever, you know, whatever his magic is.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just for the record, Ben and Shane and Nate did not like my ad with regard to hours. And I see the reason for it. I want to make it real clear that I'm not indicating that you have to have something like that. And I'm glad Nate added what he added, because Ben's good at what he does, and what he does is usually congeal and convince people voluntarily to comply. And if he's successful that way, it doesn't matter whether it's in there or not. So you could certainly choose to go with the amendment by deleting the hours and just see what happens. And if he gets compliance and we don't run into that one jerk, if I may, that I was describing that says, "Well, you'd show me where active use is," then it's not a problem. So you could certainly choose to go that way.
Council Kohler.
Thank you. Council President Freeman. Mayor Pro Tem, and all those things. I would feel comfortable with allowing the Traffic Safety Bike Ped Committee to come up with a definition for active and see if that's something that we can work out. We're not going to be able to legislate common sense, and so if there's a neighbor that says, "You know what? I just don't like Billy Bob over there playing basketball in the afternoon, and I know there's an ordinance there, so maybe I can complain enough times and he'll have to move it until he, you know..." I don't want to get in the middle of all those things. But I'd like people to be adult and work together, because we can't legislate common sense. But as far as the definition of active, I would like to refer that to the other committee.
Other comments? No? No? Oh, Council Smith, sorry. You were looking like straight at me, babe.
Sorry. Thank you, Council President Freeman. The one thing I would, when reading this, and this whole thing, actually, and I'll totally own it, stemmed from a couple of neighbors of mine that were upset, and they had come to me, and I just asked. And it was resolved. It was resolved without incident. The people, I believe Ben went out there, had a conversation. Those neighbors are no longer blocking the sidewalk. What they did is they built in like three or four pavers, and now it sits on those pavers on that property. Everybody can get by safely. I'm a block from a school, and it was resolved. I was curious from Mr. Wood, how many, how much money in fines of these $500 fines for various ordinance violations did we collect last year?
Not a whole lot. Yeah, it's a lot of effort for very little revenue.
So this isn't something the city of Kaiser just can go be a bully and get a bunch of money from?
I think we're probably talking maybe thousands of dollars at most altogether. It would be a rounding issue for me to deal with, so...
Perfect, thank you. The other thing, when it says active use, I get where we're coming from. We don't want to take away from kids being able to use it, so on and so forth, but it also would indicate that it's being moved sometimes, because you can tell a basketball hoop that's not in active use when it has three or four giant bricks on it, and it's got all of the stuff growing around it because a street sweeper can't get by, the water can't run correctly. So there may be a benefit, actually, to having that in there, because then it is removed. If it's in the middle of the winter season and there's four feet of snow or whatever, at that point, no one's going to be out there shooting hoops, so that would be an appropriate time to put our toys away. So that's just my personal opinion on it, and that's also the opinion of several people that I've spoken to in the community.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You reminded me that staff did talk about some other options and determined that maybe they weren't appropriate, such as the dead of winter idea. However, kids are crazy. I had, and they're a lot older now, but the basketball season, professionally, at least in colleges, is in the dead of winter, and that's when they get excited. So we get good weather any time of year occasionally, so, because we did look at that issue. Maybe we can just say, you know, certain times of month or whatever. It just seemed a little unworkable, so...
Well, and I want to point out, and this occurred to me, and tell me if I didn't read this correctly, is that the whole reason this is even listed is because a basketball hoop or anything like this is not a vehicle. And the only thing that's supposed to be parked in the street is a lawfully licensed vehicle, so if we don't put this here, they're not allowed at all.
Well, right.
That's why we had to make an exception here to even have this conversation, for them to even be in the street under any circumstances. So, if people are wondering, "Why are you singling them out?" Because if we didn't, you couldn't do it. They're not a vehicle, unless you put little motors on it, which might take care of the putting them away problem, but I haven't seen those developed yet. But if you're watching and you invent it, please mention my name. But it's a thought. I'm not trying to be glib here, but it does get to the other point of, the reason we have to have this conversation is otherwise they're just plain flat out not allowed, because they're not a vehicle. Council Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wonder what our youth counselor thinks about all this.
Jump right in.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a lot of opinions on this topic individually, because it, you know, while I like to speak for people I know, you know, and being surrounded by people who do play basketball on the street and stuff like that, do you surprisingly, I don't know, it might be surprising to you, I don't really have a big opinion on it. Sounds like you guys are covering it well. I would, I'd say I have to agree with most of what's being said. I mean, if it's in the road, then it's obstructing something, and so on the property, people can play just as well, so, yeah, I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And well done, being put on the spot. All right. Yes, very good. Any other discussion on this motion, which is currently on the floor, is the one about streets and has the one friendly amendment that has been made? Anything else? Okay? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously with one absent. With that, what I would like with council's consensus is to ask interested persons to work with our Traffic Safety Bike Ped Committee on ADA-appropriate alternatives, a menu of them preferably, for being able to place basketball hoops or other sports equipment that would be available in and around a public right-of-way. How do you guys feel about that? Council President Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The other thing that was discussed when you stepped out briefly was having the committee and interested citizens kind of define active use as well.
Okay. In my thinking, that might fall more to the Planning Commission, and here's why. With active use, because what I heard from, I know, they have no time. So the reason is that, as I understood, the reason for active use was, so the ones that have been sitting there, as Council Smith said, the ones with moss growing on them, the ones that have debris piled around, they may not be terribly active. So I was thinking that was more along the lines of the code, but I could be thinking about that differently. Mr. Brown?
My concern is that it's right-of-way issues, and the Planning Commission does not get into right-of-way issues. I'm trying to think of an exception to that, but I can't. So I think your original tack on it was probably more accurate, the Public Safety Committee.
Okay.
Not that I'm trying to dodge the work, but...
Oh, no, the Planning Commission has nothing to do right now. They're only hip-deep in, yeah. I'm not trying to create more work for them, but I just want to make sure it landed in the place that it would be most effective. So with that direction, to work with the Traffic Safety Bike Ped Committee, and I will talk to the chair about inviting some interested citizens like Mr. Thompson and others to come and be part of that conversation, what can we do, what can we offer to help people keep this available in the neighborhood and offer a menu of options?
So questions, just for clarifying. So the intent, then, is for the bike ped group to make a recommendation back to council to re-amend these ordinances to allow certain ways for this to occur?
Not necessarily to amend the ordinance. It would offer practical alternatives that would comply with this ordinance, because obstructions would not be there. The sidewalks would still be accessible, and to offer ADA-accessible alternatives to people in our community, and then how we might help make that happen. So whether or not it has to amend the ordinance, I think, will depend on the alternatives they come up with.
Okay.
Secondly, do we have a means of assisting those neighbors for whom that worn-out, piled-up with stuff around it, moss growing on it, basketball standards they're no longer using? Help them dispose of those? Or is that something that we don't do?
I hear that lawn sanitation can help them with that.
Indeed. But I was just wondering if there was a way we could facilitate, and I'm sure that would probably be among the tools in the toolbox that Ben has for assisting people connect up where they need to dispose of ones that they're no longer using and that is broken or... I had, one of my neighbors, they had one, and it was just completely trashed and had to be trashed. So is that something Ben just refers people on how to dispose of things that they don't like that or other debris?
He refers them, yes.
Okay. Okay.
I'm thinking about six different things here, based on the direction that the council has gone. I'm wondering if we should not add a sentence that says, "May be placed in the right-of-way provided it does not obstruct the functions of..."
I think that we can readdress that when the bike ped group makes a recommendation.
Maybe that's something that would, if you would make a note to the Traffic Safety Bike Ped Committee on some ideas that would help get their conversation starter, I think that would be a helpful thing to do, and that way our rights-of-way, both on the street and on the sidewalk, are safe and accessible. All right, anything further on this? I think we have taken care of the issue. All right, let's go on then to item 8C, an order designating a no parking zone in a certain area of Main Avenue Northeast at River Road, Kaiser, Oregon. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'm going to present this for Mr. Law, since he was unable to be here this evening. Staff was contacted by a resident on Main Avenue Northeast about a traffic safety concern caused by vehicles parking on Main Avenue at the intersection with River Road. The resident provided a written request included as Exhibit 1, signed by 34 residents representing 24 different properties, asking to have the curb painted yellow establishing a no parking zone on both sides of Main Avenue for 65 feet from the intersection with River Road, as shown on Exhibit 2. Staff has evaluated the request and believes establishing a no parking zone as requested will improve the safety for vehicles turning in to or out of Main Avenue by increasing visibility and reducing congestion at this intersection. There's a minimal fiscal impact with establishing a no parking zone at this location, and funds are available. Staff recommends city council consider the matter and adopt the attached order designating a no parking zone on Main Avenue Northeast, as indicated on Exhibit 2. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the staff report? All right. You ready? Council President Freeman?
Yeah, I do have a question, so I'm not sure if it's really to the staff report, but going the 65 feet, and I know there was some, I believe it was in Teresa's letter, it talked about the employees at Taco Bell parking, and so by going the 65 feet from the picture, do we know, do Taco Bell employees park on Main Street? Do they park in the Taco Bell parking lot? So I'm just wondering if by doing that, then are we putting more cars back into the neighborhood?
You are, you are potentially, and that was discussed with the neighbors. And they felt that that was inappropriate risk to take, because at least it clears up that intersection for visibility. 65 feet actually puts the yellow, it basically goes from the driveway entrance to the street.
Okay.
So that's the area they're asking for. The driveway entrance from...
Yeah, I just, oh, this driveway, yeah. Yeah, no, I get that, but I guess what I am hoping to not create is the neighbors then coming back saying, "We've got employees now parking back in the neighborhood," which is creating additional problems. So that's just why I was...
And once again, they've been informed of that as a possibility, and, and once again, those are public rights-of-way, so employees have the ability to park there. Our recommendation is for safety-specific.
Okay. Thank you. Council Kohler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I contacted the owners of the Taco Bell and visited with them a little bit about this, and they assured me that their employees will be parking in their parking lot for the most part, but there have been some times that some of their employees have parked there, but they will be trying to have their employees park on the lot with them.
And I think it's not just employees, it's customers and others as well, of both Taco Bell and the establishment to the south as well, so...
Okay. All right. Ready to put a motion on the table, please? Council President Freeman.
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt an order designating a no parking zone in a certain area of Main Avenue Northeast at River Road, Kaiser, Oregon.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt an order designating a no parking zone in a certain area of Main Avenue Northeast at River Road, Kaiser, Oregon. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, one absent. That's going to take us to item 8D, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of agreement relating to the creation of a development council to form a continuum of care collaborative governance structure for the Marion and Polk County region. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Shannon?
Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor and council. This issue came before council in May of this year, when the council adopted a resolution supporting the establishment of continuum of care for the region, as Mayor Clark pointed out, and supporting the idea of a continuum of care being registered with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in 2020 to be eligible for federal funds for basically our own regional, the Marion Polk region, and you can see the different jurisdictions listed there. The concept from the task force was this would give us more local autonomy and better and more efficient use of the funds. And so we have, the agreement, of course, didn't come from us, although I made a couple of comments, and some other parties made some comments on some minor tweaks, but the agreement came from the task force, I believe, for that. I will note that there's a financial contribution table attached to the memorandum that calls for an increase next year, fiscal year 2020, 2021, from $5,000 to $10,000. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'd also like to invite down Jan Calvin. She is one of the two contractors who is working through the municipal council of governments for the municipal homeless initiative in working on the development of our application to form a continuum of care. Thank you for your patience.
Certainly. Thank you for allowing me to be here.
So if you have any questions, Jan is an absolute wealth of knowledge on what we're doing here and what the continuum is going to be doing for people in our community who are homeless or housing insecure. So thank you for joining us. Are there any questions on the staff report? Council Kohler.
Not necessarily about the staff report, but I heard there was some contention about whether we're going to do a Marion County one or whether we're joining the statewide. Is that something that affects this at all?
Yes, Council Kohler, the continuum of care is a geographic region that self-proclaims itself. The one that this area is currently belongs to happens to be 28 counties, and the functions of a continuum of care include planning to address homelessness, both on prevention and intervention and action standpoint. So in the deliberations and discussions locally about what's the best footprint to do good planning, that smaller footprint was one of the main reasons we were looking at forming just a two-county continuum of care rather than staying with a 28-county region. Funding is another issue as well. Funding is another issue as well.
Okay. Council President Freeman?
So, and Jan, this may not be a question for you, maybe it's the question for the city manager and Tim. But we do have an increased yearly contribution from the city of Kaiser and we have had the lowest contribution of $5,000 a year and the first year that we put the $5,000 in, we obviously had to take away from other, either programs or contingency to, to meet the $5,000 and now we will be increasing it to $10,000. So, I guess if you had your crystal ball, would you anticipate that we're going to keep our funding levels at $10,000? Or are we looking at potentially as a city, we're going to have every year look at some sort of funding increase? I mean, and I would think that that would be all the jurisdictions that would be obviously in part of this continuum of care. And so, and the reason I'm going that is, is we are a very fiscally conservative city, which I appreciate that wholeheartedly from the city manager and our CFO. And when I'm out with citizens, that's the number one thing that they really love about our city is that we're really fiscally conservative. And so, I just want to, if you have any thoughts or any, if there's been discussions or, you know, kind of what we're looking at beyond the 2021 year, if it's known at all.
Well, a crystal ball would be what it would take, but I can give you a few thoughts. Looking at it from a standpoint of what's that money going to go for in the first place? We're looking roughly at about a $212,000 annual budget in order to have the staffing for the infrastructure to complete the duties of a continuum of care. Now, a portion of that infrastructure money will eventually be coming from HUD. How much? We don't know yet. So, trying to get us stable in a period of a couple of years is what these allocations are looking to do. Beyond that, each entity, of course, gets to decide how much they choose to contribute, trying to get some equity amongst sizes and, and the regions and so forth. But you also have overlaps. I mean, Kaiser's in Marion County. Marion County also contributes. The school district is looking to contribute. So, it's not necessarily a geographic footprint per se and it is a partnership of the willing. So, the assessment isn't being given to you. It's a suggestion and it really is your choice to make or not.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And in our discussions, we have talked about that each of our jurisdictions has to go through our budgeting process. So, this is a recommendation based on stable funding for the operation of the continuum so that the dollars we receive will go into programming, once we have established the continuum and are receiving the federal funds. Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I'm looking at this, this attachment that it has, the, the financial contributions from each of the entities, is that, there are a lot of cities and admittedly there, there's the smaller cities, but are those cities putting forth nothing to this effort or are those just not listed on here or, I mean, because I'm looking at this and we've got Marion County, city of Kaiser, Polk County, Independence, Monmouth and Salem are the only contributors to this effort and yet these other counties will benefit in... Okay, well, that's my question. So, so, yes, I...
So, because we are affiliated at the request of people who are on the homelessness initiative, task force originally, we're housing this within the council of governments. So, you see all of the cities who are members of the council of governments on the roster, okay? And when we're contemplating, how do we consider supporting the budget in the future, who pays, who doesn't? And I mentioned briefly it's coalition of the willing and obviously, city of Kaiser was there from the get-go in 2016 along with Marion County and city of Salem and for a while, Polk County. Making that initiative means something to our local jurisdiction with the recommendations and the strategic plan that I think most of you are fairly aware of. And so, when we said there are people who step forward to make something happen in the first place, now it's can we expand that to have more partners make even more happen? How do we continue to move the dial, if you will, on homeless for our region? And so, when we look to invite others, it was again, an invitation. Council of Governments can't surcharge all of its members. That doesn't work. So, there was a lot of different modeling and looking at how could we engage a broader coalition of folks and what could they bring to the table to do that? So, the long and short of it is we didn't have a mechanism to say to each and every person, you shall, again, being voluntary, and the list that you see is council of governments folks, but the bulk of those folks who are stepping forward are those who have seen the strongest impacts in their local communities. Not to say Fall City hasn't seen an impact, it has. And so, that balance is we keep expanding the pool of who will come to the table and how they will contribute. The door is always open and it is a choice. And yes, there are people who will benefit without putting any monetary funds in.
If I might add as well, some of the very smaller cities such as Fall City will benefit from Polk County's participation and we're very happy to have Commissioner Lyle Morthorst came to the last meeting. Polk County is fully engaged now in this process of the evolution of the Midland Homeless Initiative as we know it to become the continuum of care. So, this interim step is establishing the development council that is going to put together the structure that will run the continuum once that is established through HUD and our two counties become our own continuum, no longer trying to do this really impossible task of coordinating everything from Astoria to Lakeview under one continuum. That has turned out to be extremely problematic and at the end of the day has not served the people in our two county area very well. And we have the vast majority of the homeless and those in need are in our two county area. The numbers bear that out. So, that's how this is evolving. One member you do not see on here that has come to ask to be a part of this as well is the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ronde and they are bringing funding and they are bringing their incredible resources when it comes to serving people who are homeless and housing insecure. Their elder village is second to none. It's just amazing. And the work that they're doing with veterans was something that Steve Bob brought to the Midland Homeless Initiative during our task force year. So, we're very happy to welcome them on. Again, they'll be also bringing some resources to make sure that we can run this operation so that we can then establish the continuum that can bring the federal resources into our region. So, that's the, the short, medium and long range as far as I can see it. And Jan and Janet Carlson are partnered up in doing the incredibly complex nuts and bolts work on this. Good questions. Council President Freeman?
So, I know one thing that's not on here, and I realize these are federal dollars, but when you apply for funding, will you be, I'm assuming there's going to be a leverage, a match? Will that either come from the state, from, you know, like either Oregon Housing? And so, for full disclosure, I work at Oregon Housing, but I'm in homeownership, not homelessness, even though there's sometimes a correlation in there. So, will there be potentially some state money that you can leverage or match? Or the money that goes directly to our community action agencies and Midland Valley Community Action Agency is here, which receives, you know, EHA emergency housing and, and a whole gamut of other resources? And so, will that be somehow leveraged in your grant application?
And to the, to the extent that dollars that people typically don't see, we're looking at coordinating those funding streams and the services in relationship to them. So, when you think about what is the funding that goes to address the issue of homelessness in our region? We have well over $107 million that we can identify. The funding that comes out of continuum of care dollars is less than $1 million. So, you're looking at less than 1% that is the continuum of care federal dollars and in essence, those other monies are the leveraged monies.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Further questions? All right. Thank you so much for being here tonight and answering our questions. Really appreciate your work on this very, very important issue.
Well, thank you very much. I certainly appreciate the dedication of the city of Kaiser to this issue over time. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, ready for the motion? Council President Freeman?
I move that the Kaiser City, City Council adopt resolution R. 2019 authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of agreement relating to the creation of a development council to form a continuum of care collaborative governance structure for the Marion and Polk County region.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded that the Kaiser City Council adopt resolution R. 2019 authorizing city manager to sign memorandum of agreement relating to the creation of a development council to form a continuum of care collaborative governance structure for the Marion and Polk County region. Further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously, one absent. Thank you again, Jan. Really appreciate it. Okay, that takes us to item nine, which is the consent calendar. Council President Freeman, would you please read the items on the consent calendar this evening?
Sure. We have five items tonight. 9A is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a 2020 Ford F-250 vehicle for the Parks Division of the Public Works Department and authorizing the disposition of surplus property repealing R. 2019-3010. 9B is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a 2020 Peterbilt 384 dump truck and Pioneer Truck Weld Box for the Public Works Department and authorizing disposition of surplus property. 9C is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a 2020 Ford F-50 four by two truck for the water, stormwater and street divisions of the Public Works Department. 9D is a resolution authorizing the city manager to award and enter into an agreement with Dream Landscape Parks LLC for Carlson Skate Park Enhancement Project. And 9E is approval of the August 19, 2019, city council regular session minutes.
Thank you very much. Are there any pulls? Council Coler?
Thinking, Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull D.
D? Okay, D is in dog. Any other pulls? Okay, I was considering pulling E because I was not present, but I have read the minutes and I am comfortable voting on them. Okay. Council President Freeman?
I move, we, the Kaiser City Council approve the consent calendar items nine, A, B, C and E.
Second?
The consent calendar items A, B, C and E have been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously, one absent. Item 9D, Council Coler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question really was what was the original budget for that? What we thought it was going to cost and was the bid that we received under that budget or is it exceeded? Where, where are we with that?
I think we had originally anticipated $250,000 is what we put toward that. So, the bid came in about $50,000 under budget.
Perfect. I like that.
Right answer. Very good. Thank you very much. Any other questions on item 9D? Okay, Council President Freeman?
I move that the Kaiser City Council adopt the consent calendar item 9D.
Second?
Item 9D from the consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Looking forward to that project being done. Council Liaison reports. Council Parsons, so we start with you and then we'll, we'll circle around and Mr. Wolfert will end with you after Mr. Coler. Okay?
So, on the 26th, I attended the teacher appreciation, appreciation luncheon. I can't even speak at the Log House Gardens and it was obviously a great response from the teachers. Well represented and it was a great luncheon. So, appreciate everybody who put that together because I think that's a, a great thing they need to continue to do every year. Coming forward, I have a Kaiser Little League meeting tomorrow night. We have the Parks Tour on the 9th. I will be gone from the 10th to the 17th, so I will not be at the 16th city council meeting. And the Volcanoes are in the playoffs tomorrow night. First game here is Thursday. So, hope to see y'all there. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. Council Smith?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also was able to attend the luncheon for the school and that was very nice. They did a great job. Food was really good too, by the way. They did a really good job. It's K's Catering, right? Very, very good. And I just wanted to congratulate and welcome Mr. Wolfert, who also happens to be my nephew. So, I'm very excited to have him with us.
Very good. Thank you very much. Council President Freeman?
Well, let's see. It's been kind of quiet, but so, some upcoming meetings that will be back, as we all know, the Neighborhood Association meetings are starting in September. So, West Kaiser Neighborhood will meet September 12th, which is a Thursday at 7:00 PM. On 9/11 is the Planning Commission. We have a work session which Council Parsons mentioned earlier on 9/9, which is our annual Parks Tour. There will be no Marion County breakfast in September. So, just to make sure everyone, if you have that on your calendar and you were scheduled to attend, there is no breakfast. And as Council Reed will share, school is starting, some today and some tomorrow. So, please just slow down, look for all the youth that are out there and nervous parents taking their kids to school for the first day. So, just, you know, be aware of everyone that's out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good caution for sure. Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pretty much, well, everybody's going to comment on most of the things that I've attended and so forth. But this Thursday on the 5th, we do have our Southeast, Southeast Kaiser Neighborhood Association meeting at 6:30 here in the Civic Center. And we would certainly encourage anyone in that part of town to come join us. It's always a good conversation and a lot of committed neighbors and we would appreciate seeing new faces. The only other thing that I wanted to say was about the back to school thing. Parking is going to be very different and a challenge at McNary this fall. So, I would encourage you to go to the school website. There is some, some directions on parking and some explanations on how we're going to be working around the construction and so forth. Construction is in full swing and we will be working around it all year and it will take a lot of patience and it will take a lot of getting as informed as you can about anticipating the challenges. And parking tomorrow is going to be an especially big challenge. I'm going early.
There's always carpooling.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Yeah, good luck with that. Want to remind, encourage everybody, McNary is still an active construction site and to just be flexible.
Oh, and I guess along those lines, Gubster is finished already. So, there, there been and done and they, they had their ribbon cutting last Thursday, I believe. And so, yeah, progress is happening.
Beautiful. Council Coler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My wife and I lived in a house that we remodeled while we were remodeling it and it was very difficult and I'm sure that that's nothing compared to what they're doing at McNary this year. So, on, on the 21st, I attended the Chamber's Government Affairs Committee meeting and that was well attended and, and we had Bill Post that was there that went over a lot of the different bills that were passed and those that were not passed and some of the challenges that were involved in that. I, I'm impressed as I, I see what's going on with the chamber and what they're doing and, and I, I feel that we have some good allies there and it's really a good thing. Also went to the educator appreciation lunch and it was neat to see the teachers recognized for what they're doing. It's pretty amazing to watch the work that they're doing. On the 28th, I went to the Kaiser Community Dinner. It was neat to see Council Reed and Mayor Clark there. And we can talk, I'll talk about that in a second. And then I went to the Gubster ribbon cutting ceremony and listened to Mayor Clark, talked to all the people there and congratulated them for what's going on. This morning, I went to the Bay Bia Thai Kitchen ribbon cutting. Did I say that right? I don't, I don't care how you say it, but it really tastes good.
So... Branding is important.
It's, it's really a, a good place and, and my wife and I have had opportunity to meet, eat there several times and we're, we're going to enjoy them in our community. Also today, I went to the Kaiser Community Dinner follow-up meeting where we talked about what happened at the Kaiser Community Dinner. We were able to feed 311 people this month. And last month, we talked about the city council serving at one of the Kaiser Community Dinners and so, I just... And so I just happened to bring what's available. The meeting, they suggested that maybe November might be the good time for us to serve the food to the people that come. That is the day before Thanksgiving. Is anybody going to be here?
I am.
I am.
I'm not traveling.
So if that's something that we want to take on, that's an opportunity that we have. It'll be the 27th. The meal is from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. So if you couldn't be there right at 3:00, you know, we'll have others there in order to serve until we all were able to get there and participate in that. That's the day before Thanksgiving, so a turkey meal. And then next week, Wednesday, I have the Little League Task Force meeting, and Thursday, the Claggett Creek Water State Council, Parks Tour next Monday. And I was hoping to go to the commissioner's breakfast, but again, I'm out of that one. And then Thursday, the Traffic Safety Bike Pedestrian Bike... Yeah.
Traffic Safety Bike Pen.
The Big Committee.
That's a long name.
And again, welcome. It's nice to see a counselor, or youth counselor here again. Thank you for your patience, for everybody that's trying to teach me how to do all this.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Wolfert, welcome aboard. And we'd love to give you a chance to tell us a little bit about yourself. And then what's the goings-on at McNary, aside from parking?
All right. I guess there's not much to say about me. I mean, I'm a student at McNary High School, grown up in Kaiser all my life. I attend Sea Tech as well, but of course, that's in Salem. So...
What area are you studying?
Business.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's pretty cool. A lot of Kaiser youth are attending that, so it's got a big impact on the community, I'd say. Anyways, yeah, the only thing I was going to really share was, of course, that school's starting. But of course, Councilor Freeman and Reed both already touched on that. So I don't really have anything to share. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We look forward to hearing from you, and thank you for weighing in earlier. And I know you already have, you know, somebody you can talk to if you have questions, but we're all available. If you've got questions or ideas you want to share, please do get ahold of us, and we're looking forward to having this school year with you. All right. Thank you. Just a couple of things to add to the wonderful array of things folks have talked about. Blue Day. Nobody mentioned Blue Day.
Band Day, too.
Yeah. Blue Day was on the 23rd because it was a blue evening, which was great for folks coming off of work to go over there. Great turnout by the community. And that new tunnel for the athletes to run through coming on the field, it is really slick. And it just really helps bring up the excitement of the team and the folks watching. Have a great season. Go Celts. And then on the 24th, I had my monthly coffee with Kathy at El Patron. And I want to thank Chief Cowan was there for the Fire District, and Transit Director Colleen Bush was there to share about what's going on. Hold that thought there. We talked about Volcanoes Baseball, River Road Revitalization, the Kaiser Community Food Bank, and Blackberry. So if you've got things you want to share, watch my Facebook for the next one, which will be at McNary with Jeff and Cheryl's, I think it's the 21st of September. We met, the Salem Kaiser Area Transportation Studies, SCATS, met on Tuesday, and we're doing a list of upcoming projects for the Transportation Improvement Plan. I just shared the link, but if you go to the Council of Governments' website, there's an interactive map where you can look at all of the different projects that are being proposed. Go look at them, take your mouse and comment, you know, click like or please love on ours. We have three for Kaiser. We got River Road in Manzanita, Vertalane, and Wheatland. And I think that's most of the list. I'm looking at Nate to see if I missed anything. But it shows for the entire SCATS area, and we'd love to hear from you. On, let's see, coming up, we talked about the task force tomorrow night. On Thursday, I have MWA, which is the Midvallet Area Commission on Transportation. We'll be talking about the project and the work that has to be done on Highway 22 on the west side. There's been issues with safety at Doakes Ferry. The original plan that they had for building like an overpass or anything won't work because the hillside is not stable. So there are other alternatives that are being developed now to deal with that so the hillside doesn't come down in the process. That would be really bad. On the 6th, we have the SEDCOR, which is the Strategic Economic Development Corporation Annual Awards Luncheon. And then on the 7th, we have the Chariot Celebration from 10:00 to 1:00. Speakers will be about noon downtown at the Courthouse Square on the bus mall. Come on down. Saturday service is finally back. Tonight is the first night of evening service where the last bus leaves the transit mall at 11:00, not 9:00. Folks can get home from work, and that is just awesome. So thank you to Director Bush and all of the board for working so hard to get us to this point and use our resources so well. Looking forward to a great year. Let's see. The Council of Governments Executive Board will meet on Monday, and then Simanca Place is going to have the ribbon cutting on the 10th for their new courtyard. This is a community collaboration, and I'm so excited that this beautiful space will open up, and so many people in our community were so heavily involved in making this space possible. Latino Business Alliance will be meeting on the 12th, even if the commissioner's breakfast isn't. So if you want to come on down for that, it's 8:00 at the Shemekah Center for Business and Industry. And last but not least, Kaiser Homegrown Theater added a show to their production. Grace and Glory will be between the 11th and the 14th of September. Be there or be square. And Band Day on the 7th. So support our local musicians.
And Percy?
And Percy, which will be next time, at the end of the month. There's a lot going on. City Manager, this time is going to be for other business to provide, allow the mayor, city manager, city manager, you too. City council members or staff an opportunity to bring newer old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tracy? Tim? Chief?
I'll tell you that Dorothy Dior, our community outreach specialist, started this week at full-time work at Oregon Marine Board, which is a huge loss to us. Like foot pursuit, for example, or probably a cop, of all organized by Dorothy, drug paint-back events and others. She'll be sore in this, we hope, in her pleasure, we may be seen.
Nate?
Just trying to get prepared for our hearing here at city council on the 16th for the Kaiser Revitalization Plan. And I urge you, please, please, get us your questions and your concerns beforehand so we can have them specifically addressed by our consultants, because our consultants evaporate after that meeting. So this is the kickoff for that. And I sent you an email about all the meetings that we have done, all the efforts, the community outreach, all of that over this last year and a half. So it's going to be an important milestone.
Okay. Shannon?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I know Mr. Lawyer isn't here this evening, but I want to pass on, I've received numerous compliments on the River Road repaving project. People are loving it. They can tell when they're coming north on River Road, and it's like, oh, that is so nice and quiet. And they really appreciate the quality of the work and just how nice it is to drive on a well-paid street. I've also received many compliments. Again, I want to pass on to Mr. Lawyer and the entire crew and the contractor for the project at 14th and Lock Haven. That went very smoothly, and that's because of great planning, great contractor, and it's going to be a wonderful addition to getting, make it more smooth for people to leave Lock Haven and get on into the Gubster neighborhood.
Is that supposed to go live tomorrow?
When does that open? I thought it was open now because...
It's supposed to be before school.
Yeah.
Did they finish paving today? I know there was a part they still had to pave before they were, all that stuff was good, the barricades are still up, or were yesterday.
I was one of the first through it today, so... It's not, some of the striping isn't done, but I didn't notice any paving that wasn't done.
Yeah, it's the little bit from the road to the curb, they had that little section they still had to do right there.
It's possible, yeah, it's possible there might be a small section, but it is open for travel.
Fantastic. And then also compliments on the Kaiser Station Boulevard widening project and the signal, traffic signal there. That's been a big project this summer, and that's getting ready to go to completion as well. So getting closer. And I think the permanent traffic signal won't arrive till December, if I remember correctly. That was due to an issue with the vendor and some issues they had. I think it had to do with flooding, weather-related. So it will arrive in December. In the meantime, temporary fix went in because the transit district is flexible. So glad to have that one open as well. All right. Written Communications, I don't have anything other than what we shared tonight for the discussion for the sidewalk and the street obstructions. Agenda input, September 9th, next Monday at 6:00, the Kaiser Parks Tour. We will begin at Claggett Creek Park. So if people come here, please go down the street to Claggett Creek Park. And the tour will start at 6:00. Counselors, food will be available, since it'll be coming straight from work for a lot of you and me, at 5:45, if I remember correctly from Tracy's email. Is that correct? Yep. And then on September 16th, we will meet at 7:00 p.m. in regular session. And so October 7th, again, 7:00 p.m. in regular session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? All right. Saying none, the time is 9:02, and we are adjourned. Thank you all.